All right, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the October 25th, 2022 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. We'll call the meeting to order, and as usual, we'll have announcements. I just have a few things. I just want to say, we had homecoming two weekends ago, I think, in town. It was really nice. A lot of people participated. It was a lot of fun. It was a beautiful day. So, thanks to everybody who, you know, worked hard to make that work and came out and watched the teams play. It was a lot of fun. Speaking of the Smith Academy teams, I want to wish girls soccer good luck. They have their first playoff game tomorrow. Boys soccer has their first playoff game on Thursday, so congrats to them. Field hockey just finished their season this afternoon. They had a good season and we're proud of them. I'm going to give just a quick shout-out to my daughter, Hadley Zinal, who finished up today her senior year, and I just found out, I believe she leads the league in saves.
Oh, awesome.
For all the goalies. I think 180-something. So, yeah, she had a good season, so sorry. Shameless, shameless little plug there. And then, two other things, just a reminder that Halloween is coming up, so obviously, you know, if you're out and about that night, watch out for kids out trick-or-treating and being on the roads and that sort of thing. And then, the time change is coming up, November 5th, and that's always, I know our chief would want us to probably remind everyone, this is a good time to change their batteries and their smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors.
Excuse me.
Ed, you said you had a couple of announcements.
Yeah, November 10th, Council of Aging will have a free breakfast for town veterans and spouses and senicific and others. But you have to call the Council of Aging by November 1st to make your reservation, or stop in at Council of Aging before November 1st. So, again, this will be catered by, I believe it's Summit View, and it's a free breakfast, so take advantage of that. And also, on November 11th, in front of Town Hall, will be a small ceremony on 11/11/11, the day to end all wars. That's how it was mentioned, but, so hopefully, the town can come out for November 11th in front of Town Hall for a small ceremony. So, those are my announcements.
Thank you, Ed, and I, you know, thanks for what you do for the veterans' service every year. It's appreciated, and thanks for your service as well.
Also, at the breakfast, they'll have a VA representative, and our service officer, Jerry Clark, will be available to answer questions, so I'll let people know that, too.
Very good. Brian, did you have any announcements?
No, I guess just a reminder that it's voting season. So, early voting has been, is open, and the sign's out front, and I'm sure it's on our website, and of course, November 8th is the general election.
And these are the machines behind us, right?
Yep. But other than that, I have nothing, madam chair.
Anyone here for public forum? Okay. Oh, you know what? I forgot to read our public participation policy, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Okay, so our first item tonight is, as usual, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve minutes, October 5th, 2022.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes, October 11th, 2022.
Second. A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the first order of posted business tonight is under Appointments and Resignations. This is an appointment to the Board of Library Trustees. This would be a joint vote with the library trustees who are joining us here tonight. Would you like to come up to the seats that are closer to the microphone?
Marlene had something.
What's that?
Marlene had something.
Oh, Marlene, sorry.
So, reviewing the statute with the town clerk today, it is a joint meeting, but each board should vote.
Separately.
Separately.
Okay.
By roll-call vote.
By roll-call vote. Okay.
Just to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, there were two people that expressed interest.
Correct, but one has, in fact, withdrawn.
Okay.
So, where am I not seeing the names?
That's on for the TV.
So, good evening. My name is Doty Guidette. I am Chair of the Library Trustees. We have a vacancy as of a few weeks ago. Amy Guklowski just found it too difficult to run a restaurant in town and be on the Board of Trustees, so we did go through the process of announcing a vacancy, and we were very fortunate to have Kathy Sheehan say that she would be interested in joining us. So Kathy is here this evening, along with Marcia Humphrey, who is, has been on the Board for several years. So, we would like to recommend that Kathy join us as being a trustee of the library and whatever else needs to be done this evening.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you for stepping up and certainly highly qualified. Pretty sure you can do this, Kathy. Great, I don't have any questions, just, you know, always nice to have new people come on board, and you said the other candidate withdrew?
She did. She was interested in serving, but when she found out that there was another candidate, she said that she thought she could put her efforts to other things at the library, and so.
Okay, and she was a great candidate, too.
She was, correct.
Happy to see her step forward. So, two good candidates is a good thing, but Kathy, very, I'm really glad to have you.
We've never had two people before.
I know, right? A line forming.
Feast or famine.
That's great. Well, it's a great, you know what? It's a really nice way to give back to the community, so not a lot of stress down there with the library trustees.
It's a great, it's a great little library.
It is a nice little library.
It is, indeed.
It really is. Very, very well-run and a nice, really nice asset we have here in town.
It's a perfect spot for me.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. So, should we take our vote first, or do they?
I would think the lib, well, I would.
Yeah, okay. So then, we'll accept your vote. So you would take your official vote first?
Okay.
So, somebody would make a motion, a second, then it to roll-call versus just all in favor?
I make a motion that Kathy Sheehan become or join the Library Trustees.
I second the motion.
And you said, so we have to?
You just have to say?
Second. You have to say, "All those in favor," and it's a roll-call, so you each have to vote.
Okay, so, "All those in favor." Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good, perfect. I'll make a motion to appoint Kathy Sheehan to the Hatfield Library Board of Trustees.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Moriarty, aye.
To where's the aye?
Zinal, aye. Congrats.
Yeah, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. We don't, we don't see you very often, so thanks for coming in, and thanks for doing what you're doing there. Appreciate it. Okay, so, next order of business is under our DPW report. It looks like we have some sewer abatements.
Correct, so we have two in front of you. The first is at 28 Elm Street. As you can see, it's for the middle barn, which has no sewer in it, so it read, the sewer side read on a meter for some reason, or the account was charging sewer. So, we corrected the account, and these, we're looking to abate the sewer side of the water and sewer building.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to abate the sewer mound for 28 Elm Street.
Elm? Oh, yes. Address of service, yeah?
Pardon me?
Yes, that's the service address.
Oh, the service address, yeah. Yeah, the mailing address was different.
A motion's made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second one is for 9 Scotland Road. As you can see, they have a new pool, so again, we're looking to abate the sewer side of it.
I'll make a motion to abate 9 Scotland Road, ask put forth to the Board.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, if I may?
Thanks, Phil. Yes, go ahead.
So, speaking of water, how does the town now with the voluntary water ban that we've had in effect?
So, we have lifted the voluntary water ban. We have removed all the signs throughout town, and, you know, I just want to thank all the residents for, you know, their voluntary to conserve water during a tough time with the extended drought. You know, we really appreciate that. We had some big flows going, and after we initiated the voluntary water ban, the flows did drop, so, you know, we appreciate you cooperating with the ban, because it was very important to have fire protection throughout the town at that time.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to townspeople and to DPW for monitoring that. Is that all you have, Phil, for now?
That's about it.
Well, I do think I saw an email you're prepping for winter, right, Phil?
Please.
Clouds, sand, et cetera, et cetera.
Someone in this room, not mentioning any names, is saying that it's going to be a mild winter, so.
Aye.
Hopefully, that's true.
I don't know.
Okay, positive thinking works all the time.
Let's be positive about mild conditions.
Well, not, maybe not all the time.
We'll know soon.
Never know. Okay, so, Marlene, moving on to the Town Administrator Report.
Yes. So, first item, the holiday schedule, the pending holiday schedule.
Oh.
So, you know, Select Board has been very nice over the years to extend the Thanksgiving holiday, and, you know, I had a conversation recently with Mr. Moriarty, and, you know, there has been some discussion about adding it to the holiday policy, you know, holiday schedule, I should say, in the HR policy book. And so, if the Board would like to consider adding it, so you don't?
You mean, the day after Thanksgiving?
The day after Thanksgiving.
This is what we're talking about.
Yes, the day after. It's certainly the Board's choice.
I can't ever see a circumstance where we would not grant this to our employees. I mean, we're, you know, we're grateful for them. We try to show them that in ways like this.
Right.
So, I'm all for adding it, as, then everyone knows, and it's not this last-minute, you know, a few weeks before the holiday. People know if they want, need to book travel, or, I mean, they can always take the day off, I understand that, but I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we've done it for years. Last time I was on the Board, we always gave it off. There's, it's never been a, you know?
And the reason Marlene said that was because I, every year when it comes up, I call Marlene and I say, "Didn't we vote on that last year to just make it an official day off?"
And I'm thinking, well, maybe the Board did, and I just never did anything with it.
The employee's sort of on the town side, because school's on vacation anyway.
Right, yeah.
So, I'm all for just making it. I have no problem making it a permanent.
Nor do I, aye.
What do you think, Ed?
I don't have a problem either. I mean, I'm coming around here for a while, and I see all the effort that the town employees put in. Today, I was watching town employees. They, they all jumped in and worked. It was very impressive how well they worked today on the road. I mean, I've always seen them out there doing their thing, so.
I would also, and I agree with everything Ed and Diana have said, I would also say that, to Diana's point, it's granted every year thus far, so why not just make it, you know, an official day off, just so people can plan such a busy travel weekend and homecoming for people?
And that's the other reason I bring it forward now, so people can plan.
Yeah.
Right. People, even if you're not traveling, you're having visitors and guests and...
So, I'll make a motion that the day after Thanksgiving become a permanent holiday. Is that the right word you want me to use? Or an official holiday?
Permanent paid holiday.
Permanent paid holiday, the day after Thanksgiving.
For all eligible employees.
For all eligible employees from this day forward.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Could I ask another question about the holiday schedule? So, Luminarium is, in fact, going to be the Saturday before Christmas Eve, which would make it December 17th this year.
Okay.
Is that right? I just, I'm just throwing that out there as people, I mean, Thanksgiving's right around the corner, and next thing you know, Luminarium will be, so that's what the town...
Just so townspeople know.
Yeah, that's all I'm...
Yes, December 17th.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
Yes, that would be, because it's, yeah, the weekend before Christmas Eve.
Okay, so just so as people are meeting at Thanksgiving and making their plans for Christmas, it's really, it's a week before Christmas this year, given, given all that. Okay, so December 17th it is.
Yep.
That's all? Thank you.
Now, for Christmas holiday, the actual day off would be December 26th, and same, it would be January 2nd, correct?
Correct, correct.
Just because of it falling on a Sunday. So, just so townspeople know, December 26th and January 2nd, the Town Hall would also be closed, and town employees would have that day off.
Right.
Okay. Just for planning.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, just to have a new hire for the Fire Department, and Board doesn't need to vote.
We just sign.
We just sign.
Okay.
Okay.
Update of the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Yes, so, Open Space Committee had held a meeting on the 19th. I should say, a public forum on October 19th with Pioneer Valley Planning, Senior Planner Mimi, Mimi Kaplan, right?
Mimi Kaplan.
Kaplan, yeah. Excellent presentation, and I was surprised, you know, there were approximately, I'd say 18 people in attendance.
I know, I wasn't able to attend that night.
But they, Mimi gave an overview, you know, presented the survey results, and this was a survey that residents were asked to complete, I believe since maybe June, May or June. There were about 250 responses, and I have provided a copy of the survey results to the Board, and if anybody's interested, they can certainly contact my office. I have that information. So, they also, they being the committee, highlighted projects that they have completed since the last Open Space and Recreation update with, you know, new hiking trails or improvements to existing hiking trails, and they also talked about, you know, Phase 2, to construct a pavilion in the park, and that they're currently looking at, at that. And then, there was some discussion from the audience about proposed projects for recreation purposes, pickleball, tennis court, tennis court, and Hatfield Fish and Game was represented at that meeting and had urged the Open Space Committee to support, you know, some work for Day Pond, so that it can be used for other recreational purposes. I was mistaken. I had a conversation with somebody earlier about kayaking and canoeing on there, and that's not possible.
Well, what they said, I did a, I did attend, and what they said was getting access to do kayaking.
Okay, so I wasn't, okay.
They had looked above the Mill River, but most of the landowners were not allowing access
Yes.
to the Mill River, so.
It was suggested at the public forum that perhaps the pond could be used for ice skating also, so, you know, continued, fishing derby would continue to be held there, and people, any residents that want to walk to the...
Kapalank, walk to Kapalank, and...
Yeah, so since then, I reached out to a water management consulting firm about possibly doing a study ahead of any work, potential work, and it looks favorable, but I'd like, I'm going to get a cost estimate, and I would like to submit, the Board agrees, an application to community preservation for the assessment for that study.
Right, that's what I was going to say. That seems like something CPA
Yes.
money could cover.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, great. So, yeah, sounds great.
That forum was informative.
Well, I'm sorry I missed it. Okay, and then, we have, are you, are you all set on that item?
I am, thank you.
And then, we have, we've received a donation, generous donation?
Yes.
Did you want to speak to that, or?
So, Joan Cox has been in contact with Open Space Committee, interested in making a donation to purchase four trees to be planted in Smith Academy Park. She is interested in having them planted in memory of a resident, and she will be communicating with, with Open Space about that. So, the donation is $1,000, and so, it's a gift to the towns. The Board is required to vote to accept it, and then, the accountant will set up an account for that purpose.
Okay. And they'd be out here, and those would all be located?
Yeah.
With Phil and Open Space and...
Well, they have, oh, yeah. That was drafted by their architect landscaper for the park, and they located the trees in certain spots, so.
Do you know what kind of trees they are?
Yeah, to ask, right? I forgot.
They're not like, they're not evergreens.
No, 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 no. They're a special tree. Yeah.
Sorry, I was just going to ask, are, is there a plan to have some sort of signage or plaque if they're in memory of somebody?
Well, Joan had expressed interest in a plaque, having a plaque, if that's possible.
Four plaques? One plaque per tree? I mean, we need to, so, I certainly admire the idea
Sure.
and appreciate it, but I just think that that part of it might need a little conversation.
When Joan and I talked yesterday, she was a little unsure whether she was interested in one plaque for all four trees, or if maybe just one plaque for one tree.
I didn't know if they were four different in memories of versus one.
No, one person.
Oh, okay.
One person.
Gotcha, okay.
Oh, then we could probably word it somehow.
Yeah. So, yeah, she just seemed unsure whether she would like to see all four trees, you know, dedicated to that one person, or if maybe one tree and then the other trees, perhaps maybe in the future. I don't know, but she was going to talk to Rich Abbott about it.
Okay, and I am not trying to sound ungrateful whatsoever, but, and so I hope this doesn't come out that way, but I think when we're talking about signage or plaques or something like that, we need, we need to, as a town, have an idea or a plan for those.
Right, right.
As to what, what can be allowed, what wouldn't be allowed, maintenance of those.
Yeah, and some can be costly, too, so it would have to be factored into this.
Right, right, and I'm just getting it out there now, so there's no expectations that we don't meet.
I think it's something to speak to Rich Abbott about.
Yes, definitely.
Well, Rich and the DPW, because...
And the DPW, and Joan, and for her wishes and everything.
Oh, absolutely, for Joan, right.
But this is very generous, and we appreciate it very much.
Yes, yep, absolutely.
So, yeah, it's from Joan and Peter.
Peter, yep. That's great. Well, thank you very much, Joan and Peter.
So, we need to vote to accept that.
Make a motion to accept the generous donation from Joan and Peter Cox.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No, just thank you very much for the donation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the last order of business tonight is actually posted for 6:00 PM, and it's not quite 6:00 yet, and it's to meet with West Street residents about the Route 5 Water and Sewer Construction Project. So, maybe we should just take a quick break until 6 o'clock?
Take five.
I think so.
We'll take five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're back. We just took a quick break. We have posted business at 6:00 PM tonight, which is to have our West Street residents in to talk further about the Water and Sewer Construction Project out on Route 5. You know, we've had you in several times through this project, and I just want to point out, we're also joined tonight by Mike Carmasine from CEI, which is the engineering firm. So, I guess, are we just going to open this up for if, so, if anyone wants to come up to the mic, if there's anything specific they want to bring up, or concerns, or thanks, anything?
Maybe Mike could kick it off if you don't mind.
Mike, you want to do that? Okay, we'll give, we'll give Mike a few minutes, and then we'll make sure that anybody here who wants a chance to speak tonight will have one.
So, brief update for, because I know a lot of people are blind to what's going on. Right now, we've been trying to coordinate the final paving for West Street. The contractor has a sub that does that work. They're called Hunter Brothers Paving Company. They've been getting delayed for the past couple of weeks. We were trying to have them out there two weeks ago, but today is the first day they could actually start. So, they started today, and today and tomorrow, they're going to focus on the north side of West Street, and then next week, they're scheduled for Monday and Tuesday to do the south side of the bridge where we had a forest main. And then, the following week, they'll do the south, the side just north of the bridge, which is around 32, 34 West Street, that location. So, we're hoping that the paving and the cleanup happens over the next three weeks, and the paving should come out a lot nicer than what's out there now, because what's out there now is just a temporary patch that isn't really meant to hold up that well. So, hopefully, we'll see a much better drivable road in the coming weeks. And then, beyond that, the plan is to install the pump station this year. They'll have at least about three weeks of work to get the excavation, shoring system in, and the structures in place. We're hoping to have that in before Thanksgiving, ideally, and then, the following year, once the DOT gives us the ability to access the road again, we'll have the remainder of the sewer installed, which is about 1,500 feet of sewer. And so, that's, that's basically the update. So, if any questions, happy to answer.
Mike, Dave Canton, 37 West.
Can, excuse me, I think it's going to be best if you come up to the mic when you want to have a chance to speak, and just say your name and your address
Sure.
for the record, please.
My name is Dave Canton, 37 West Street. Mike, what's, what's the situation at 35, 37? That's where they stopped coming north. Apparently, there's some problem with, with clay in the area and water.
Right, their, their current dewatering system wasn't adequate to dewater in that area, because of change in soil conditions. So, we have, we have a change order that just got funded through Mass Works. That's going to, the funding's become available for youth next year.
So, they're going to re-dig the wells?
Yeah, there's a different, they use a different system. It's, it's like a wellhead system that has like many, many well points that all dewater in the very, like, compact method, every 200 feet, and then it gets shifted down every 200 feet, but...
You mean, as they, as they progress up the street, they'll keep moving it up?
So, it's staged every 200 feet, so there's, they have to install it, which takes some time, and then they'll, as the sewer gets installed there, they'll move it to the next 200 feet and keep going until it's complete.
Okay, okay. And this is, this is scheduled for next spring, is that right?
Yeah, the DOT allows you to access the road. I believe it's middle of April, around there, unless, unless you get granted to do it earlier if the weather's better.
Okay. So, the paving that you're doing now is basically a temporary patch until the spring?
It's the, it's the permanent patch for the area that the sewer's already been installed at.
Okay, and how far did the sewer come? They started at the south end, didn't they?
Yeah.
And they got up to about 35, 37 mile area?
Yep.
Okay, and that's it?
That's it. And then it was about, there was a gap of about 1,500 feet until they were able to start again.
Up near the USA?
Yeah.
Travel, I mean, traffic.
Right, yeah, right there. And they were able to start again because the soils were better, but also the water table was a little shallower. So they used a more typical dewatering system.
Why didn't they shift to that end? I mean, they did do some at that end, didn't they? They started up a little farther north near Chestnut Street and came down to USA.
That might have been the water. For the sewer, they just kind of leapfrog ahead and then continue going up. So they might have done the water at that point.
So they've got to go from our end, from the south end to the north, is that right?
Correct. It's a middle piece. It's about 1,500 feet long, yeah. For the sewer, just the sewer.
How long would you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. How long would you expect that project would take in the spring?
I believe it was about 200 feet every two weeks. It's a lot slower because they need to kind of deconstruct the dewatering system and move it forward. So the contractor just can't work continuously. He's kind of, he has to wait for the dewatering system to get pulled and then reinstalled the next 200 feet.
Sure.
And so that takes some time to do that.
So they have to dig a wellhead every 200 feet, is that right?
It's a series of wellheads for 200 feet.
I mean, we have a series of wells.
Right.
And they're, I don't know, what are they, about 75, 100 feet per?
These are closer well, well points. They're like within five feet, I think, I thought that's what you said.
Oh, okay, okay.
Five feet for 200 feet. They drive them and then they pick it all up and move 200 feet down. You know, so I think that, to Diana's point, there's probably another three months out there.
Okay. All right. That pretty much covers what I need.
Good, great questions, thank you.
And then I have one quick question. Will there be, you know, I know last year, over the winter, there was storage of some supplies and equipment out there. Will there be some of that this winter as well?
There shouldn't be this winter. Because I think the pump station, they'll finish their work with the pump station before the worst part of winter. But then they'll remobilize to do the rest of the sewer, probably, best case, end of March.
Okay, I know we had residents that had things parked, right? All last winter? Or at least pipes and things now? Just curious about that, okay. And the...
My backyard. Is my backyard that good? Can we get this out of here?
So, did you want to come up and speak?
I just want you guys to look at things because I can't play the...
Sure, do you want to bring them up?
People live in this, so...
If you could just...
It matches me, it's my neighbor.
If you could just, I'm happy to look at those.
My name is Terry. I live at 53 West. This basically is what's in my back, pretty much in my backyard right now. They've been pulling and dumping and...
Tomorrow.
Sure, please, thank you. These are what it looked like before that. And I'm hoping at some point, we can get back to that because this is not easy to live with while they're crashing and banging constantly on a daily basis for years now. It's giving to be a lot. What do I show you first?
The difference, yes.
It's located right there. And I have a new medicine, environmental protection area that all the stuff is gathered in front of.
Oh, sorry.
And it's still there currently. So the question is, what will be removed for...
And that gets, that's kind of what I was getting at. What's, what is leaving? Is anything being left behind in the non-construction months on these properties this year?
It shouldn't be. I'll coordinate with the contractor to get that removed. It shouldn't be leaving.
There should be no equipment or materials stored on West.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have a staging area.
Where's the staging area, Phil?
Staging area is what's at the west.
Pardon me?
I mean, at the wells.
Okay, is that...
Is that like part of the...
Is that what we're looking at?
I don't, yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll bring them down, Phil, or pass them down. Because it's one thing, it's one thing certainly to not have it on residents' property. But I think the other thing is, is it gonna be on town property?
Before and after pictures.
You can't even close your kid's eyes. I've got little kids that want to play on the sand. They were bringing them in today as well. Why is it in my yard?
So this is the well.
Okay.
There was truckload after truckload of dirt coming.
Today.
Phil, do you know why dirt was going in today?
Okay.
Phil or Michael? They're saying that truckloads of dirt were going in today. Do you know why?
I think they're dropping the millings in there. That's what I think. He's milling the road down there on the north side, on the north end of the project at the Chestnut Street end. So I think, so they could keep going, they're storing the stuff down here.
And then it'll be removed?
It'll be removed.
One second, she had asked before. Did you want to come up to the microphone and just say your name and address?
Yep, I'm Liz Brown and I'm at 35 West Street. And just had a couple of questions. When you start mid-April, where will you be starting?
From the bottom portion.
What is the bottom, do you mean by like 35 West Street?
Yeah, I believe it's about 35.
Okay.
It's about 300, 400 feet up from the bridge.
Okay.
That's about right, so.
Okay.
Where the trench stops would be a good...
Okay. Another question. Will there be barrels put up this winter again? Because I still have, I still have a little metal plate right on the shoulder. And when friends come over, they back into my driveway, I back into my driveway. And I'm afraid somebody's gonna pull up ahead and go down on that. The metal plate is down about this much.
Okay.
And it's small, but I don't know what it's covering up. And I also have, I have a hose coming out of the ground.
Okay, that may be for testing chlorinating, the water main? If it's like a poly...
Yeah, it is. It's about this thick.
It's a blue line?
Yeah, it just kind of snakes out a little bit.
That should get removed because the water main's tested and installed completely, so...
And then there's one of those white standing things. Will that all be removed? Because last year, there were barrels there and someone hit a barrel one night and...
So last year, DOT required us to put the barrels over them. Where they were dewatering, that's what that is for, that white pipe.
So will that be up all winter again?
I would say yes. I don't think they're gonna remove the dewatering system that's out there today.
No.
Before winter.
Before winter, wrong, yeah.
Okay, so there's no more cleanup of gravel on the lawn? Some of it was cleaned up, but some of it was still there. And now it's going across the driveway. So there's not gonna be any more cleanup of gravel before winter?
They'll clean that up before, like as they pave. I was talking to the contractor about, let's see, there was a... There's a couple of properties that he knew had gravel, like in the front yard, that he's coming back to. I think he's gonna follow through with that after the paving's over.
Okay.
But I'll make sure that he does.
Okay, thank you. It's at 35.
Phil, can you just make sure that they...
At 37, okay.
Those specific properties, especially that lane.
The lawn has finally come back after the drought and it's just a mess.
I think it's important that we try to get eyes on that entire area after construction, after we're told, construction is done and everything's great, you know, for, before winter. And then we get eyes on it to say, wait a second, we still see an issue here or an issue there. Or you're right, everything does look good. But I mean, I don't think, and it's not that anybody's not being upfront with us, but what we think is completed, what the residents think is completed, and what a construction company might think are completed, could be three different things. And so I think we owe it to the residents for sure to just do another walkthrough and say, okay, wait a second.
Yeah, so I talked to the contractor today who was down there, the owner of the company. And you know, and I had that conversation with him. You know, and his main concern right now is to mill the street and get it paved. That's his main concern right now. But after that, he surely, you know, I surely said to him that you have to go back and clean the lawns, get the gravel off of there if there's anything hanging around. Get it off of there before winter.
Five rocks in there too. They kept on grabbing rocks in there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. And if they could, you know, also take a look at those pictures and...
Yep, yeah, we can get those returned.
Attorney McGlaughlin.
Hi, I'm Attorney John McGlaughlin, our resident Ms. Berry, owner of 34, 36. Not talking about eminent domain. In March of last year, your superior, Michael, was here and was talking about the installation of laterals. He said that he would use white flags and white paint to designate where the laterals were gonna be put in. And we never saw that. And the lateral was put in at a location other than what we wanted. I wrote to him in August and have never heard back. So I'll give you a copy. Maybe you can try to get Michael to get back to us. You know, we have heard nothing since August. And he, you know, he said, we'll be right on top of this, get in touch with us. And I told him, this has nothing to do with the eminent domain. Your town's lawyer said, deal with Michael directly. I did, and you know, it's almost November and we've never heard back. So we'd appreciate hearing back on that issue. And also, are you really intending on constructing the Russell Beach Pumping Station before your DOT permit runs this year?
I'll have to check. I don't have the DOT permit with me, so I have to check that.
But I mean, that's the intent, is to do it this year, not next year? To construct the pumping station?
Ideally, yeah. Yep.
All right, okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody, Craig Stevens. I live at 33 West Street. I've seen you all, most of you, for the meetings and stuff. So I'll just take a second to recap for what I'm gonna...
Can you say your number again?
33 West Street.
Okay, so you're right.
Yeah, and I'll say a question to you, but I have to preface it with, these meetings, we've been told a lot of stuff. I've talked to Ryan, the owner of the construction company that's doing all the work multiple times. You know, you all know, or maybe you remember or not, but my property's been flooded with three inches of smud multiple times. I've had to move hoses so it wouldn't flood again. And then Mike Orr wanted me to have the construction company re-gravel the driveway because it flooded, the mud went all over that. And I said, absolutely not, those guys are not allowed on my property. And I was told that, I was told that, well, my neighbor was told that her yard was gonna be cleared out from debris last spring. It wasn't done and she's still having to deal with it now. We were, I was told about these marks to where the side marks are gonna go for where the laterals come out. I'm not hooking up to it, but I do want to know where it was. The marker was never put out of there. All my neighbors, the markers were never put out of there. They were promised us by the Mike Orr, Mike Orr, or whatever his last name is, Mike, and also Ryan, that they were gonna do that. They were gonna, they were gonna re-grade in front of my house. It's the same grading that they left there. The, we've talked about the paving situation for like nine months and the patches, the patches are, there's trailers, there's cars and trucks all night long going over there. There's pieces of cars and wheel hubcaps on the side of the road. There's noise all night long. You know, you guys corrected me one of my first meetings for swearing one time. And I just want to say to you, if you think that you're gonna correct me for swearing after, we've lived two years. It is really, my tenants next door, I mean, in the front of my house, really used the word torture. They did not want to come to this meeting. The wife is so upset. It's like all night long. Now, we happen to be that house and that unit is the closest one to the road. But the construction company, what I want to say to you guys, we had a meeting with the gas and whatnot, and we were all congratulating each other. We have no problem with Hatfield. Hatfield has been great. The gas company's been great, all the emergency staff. You know, the line blew up. I was without water for two days, which is, I think, illegal. You know, and luckily, the Tony, the water guy, hooked me up to the water main for unpodable water for the night. But it's just one frickin' thing after another. And like, the reason, you know, that I have to restrain myself from my language is really upsetting because I am so sick of being lied to. It's one person, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this by this date. All of us have been lied to over and over and over again. I was promised that I was gonna get my tenant's hotel bill by the chief of police. He means well, but he's dealing with a bunch of people that don't give a shit. This company lie, I have talked to him so many times, and I'm a landscape architect that has a landscaping hands-on business. I deal with construction companies all the time. I know how to deal with these guys. I've never been treated so rudely, you know, arrogant, trash all over my, they were in front of my house for eight and a half weeks. There was so much litter and crap there that I picked up every single night from these guys. And so we've paid all this money, this town has, I want to say this to you, not that you're, you should be freaking out. You know, like Mike Orr was so happy that they haven't gone up in price. I'm like, up in price? Just because it's a mess, because they've dug the same hole, I don't know how many times, the one next door to my driveway's been dug up nine times, the same hole. Now, I know they have to connect stuff and all that. But it's so, this whole thing is so inefficient. And now you're telling me, you're not even saying for sure, you're saying, hopefully the road's gonna be paved, right? What kind of an answer is that? That's what I want to say. I don't think, I don't even know if the road's gonna be paved at all at this point. How can you assure me that our money, our money, all of us, every single person in this room, is being spent properly?
Well, it should be paved in three weeks.
And is it gonna be dug down four inches, like by code and by what's in the contract and what has told us? That it's ground out to take all of those bumps out, those deep, 18-foot deep holes that were dug? That stuff settles. And that's what the problem is. And I don't want to have a nice, clean roadway and hear those trucks all night still.
Yes, the temporary pavement is done by the utility contractor.
I understand that.
Not a paving contractor, and it's a much shallower...
I understand that, but you just, you told me, I didn't make this up, you told me, hopefully. How, I've been, we've been lied to all, for two years. So now, am I, what am I supposed to say? Oh, I feel good about this meeting? When you say hopefully? Like, and you don't even know about this, whatever that permit is, when you're supposed to put in before winter, a serious pumping station?
So I can't guarantee paving. There's, I've had paving contractors that their whole crew gets COVID. Sometimes they get bumped to another job, even though you make them know this project's very important to everybody. And paving contractors are sometimes very tight at the end of the season. But our goal was to have it paved, you know, then to start two weeks ago. And they were pushed off a couple of weeks until today, started today. And I won't lie to you, I mean, if the weather is just terrible for the whole week, they can't, they can't pave if it's raining.
I understand that. I deal with the same thing. I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that, you know, how do you think we all feel? You know what I mean? Like, we just feel like, nobody listens to it. Everybody gives us a bunch of, you know, gives us a forum to talk. And we talk and we share stories and we feel good for a day. And then, you know, in three days, all night long, and the thing doesn't get done, and then it's December 1st, and then what do we do? Oh, we can't, the paving company is closed. You know, you can talk about COVID and weather all you want, I know all about it. I'm in the same kind of business. So I just want you to know that I'm a pro Hatfield guy. I think our officials have done a great job. I have no problem with them. But these engineers and these people that keep promising us, that are doing it, this company that we're using is a joke. I don't care what you think or if they're staying in their price range. They have abused the tenants, the tenants of our Midwest Main, West Street. That's all I can say. And I just want to say that on record because I'm so done with this. You know what I mean?
And I'm really and truly sorry you're all going through this and that it's taking this long. I know that this is tiresome for everybody. I said before this project, I didn't have much faith in this company, but it was the low bidder. I'm not necessarily happy with how this has gone either. I do have full faith in Warner Brothers and would be really surprised if they don't finish this paving by the end of the season. Because they're, you know, I've never had anything but great experiences with Warner Brothers.
Hey, we're hopeful, to use your word. I'm very hopeful. I'm very hopeful, but I'm just, I got, I have to say that I don't believe anything right now. And I have facts to back it up. You know what I mean? And we, I really hope that this is gonna be, you know, we're gonna be able to sleep for a while, you know, before who knows what this project happens with the pumping station and all the rest of it. So anyway, I've said my piece and thank you all for coming here and thank you for listening to me.
Sure. How about Mrs. Berry? Then I'll get back to you.
I have to say...
Could you come up to the...
After listening to this, I, I just have to say, I know that people are upset about the paving. My name's Susan Berry and I live at 65B Old Stage Road. I own 3436 West Street, the restaurant. I know people are having problems with paving. But at the end, we're gonna be living with a rot sewage pump station in a restaurant lot, when it could have been designed up the road at 47 West Street, where you own the property. There's already been a precedent where the sewer has been piped up off of someone else's property. And it's, it's just a horrible situation that I'm gonna have to live with, with the rest of my life and my neighbors' lives. When it could, there's other options. It could go somewhere else. You know, you had a low bidder design company, you had a low bidder company, everybody does everything on low bid. But it wasn't designed properly. Now you're having all kinds of problems with water coming into a pipe that's not even used. All that money you're spending could have been just solved by putting it up, out, away from the river. It's within 70 feet of the river. I, I can't imagine how you people can think like this, when there were so many other options, better options.
Well, and those decisions were made by the townspeople at the meeting.
They weren't informed properly. Besides, we won that, you know, we won that first vote. Things were rigged. Anyway, I'm done. You know? I just wanted to say my piece.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks, so.
Sorry, sorry. I'll get back to you, but did you want to...
I just want to have a short game in a second.
Sure.
I'm having a surgery soon, so I'll be hopping around really well. I'm Virginia Canton. I live at 37 West Street. What I wanted to ask, well, one of the things is that we have, we had sinkholes outside of our house. And they were, I think, between 35 and 37. They weren't huge. A member of our family, because we had other cars there, had to park out there with a brand-new car. And fortunately, it didn't really rain hard for a couple of days, so they were gone. But they were deep enough to take a, a good-sized tire in. For like three weeks or four weeks, I don't even know how long, until I kept calling, they put upside-down signs in the hole with just the bottoms of the metal sign sticking up like, so that you could, I mean, at night, you might not see it, because they were just like little posts. And it was just like ludicrous that nobody else, none of the construction people came and did anything until we kept badgering. And it's, it was like between the road edge and our front yard. So we were pulling over fortunately more into our, we have a tree there, we can't go any further. So it was like, it was right on the edge where one of the tires might have gone when you're, when you're leaving. And it was like, why don't they see things like this? I mean, that's my thing. Why don't you act on it? Oh, there's a hole here. And to piggyback on that, I want to know why there isn't more looking at that area to say, "Is the, is the road stable under there? Is the, is the bed stable?" So that if there were two small sinkholes, next year are we gonna have three big sinkholes? You know what I mean? I don't know what's under there and how well it's, the structure will uphold the road. That's one of my concerns. And the other one is whoever, and I don't know which one of the construction people did this, but Craig will vouch for me on this one. 5:15 in the morning, slamming an excavator, one single person into the chains, everything. And my husband went out to find out what was going on. He said, "What..." Yeah. He said, "It's 5 o'clock in the morning. It's dark. We didn't know what was out there." And it was a, and the guy goes, he says, "Aren't you supposed to start at like 8 o'clock or..." The guy goes, "Well, hello," and he just took off. But it took him 45 minutes to unload that stinking excavator. And we were all wide awake in the neighborhood by then. And that was just so rude and so ignorant of our, of our feelings and how it might be for people that go to bed late at night or have to get up at 7:00. You know, it was just totally unnecessary. And I just think the way they're treating us is part of our anger. The disrespect is unbelievable. And thank you.
Phil, are you communicating with Gilaheer about these kinds of things? Well, but somebody's gotta be. I mean...
Well, they're adding insult to injury. And that's the problem, adding to an already frustrated community.
I just want to make sure that all of these items are being brought to Gilaheer. And I, I'd like to make sure there's some kind of resolution.
I'd like the owner to watch this show, watch this taping. I want to see, and I'd like to hear back from you that he did.
I mean, I, I, I've had concerns, I had concerns.
No, you did.
So this is neither surprising, but...
Because my understanding too is after every state project, there's a rating. And if ratings are low, they can cause them not be able to bid on other state projects. So I want to make sure that if we're not satisfied and things are taken care of, we're not going to give this contractor a good rating.
Or another job. Okay, one, one more quick one, and then we'll give other people time.
We don't know yet.
How much have you applied for?
The first one was $2 million. Yeah. We, we had a $2 million grant from Mass Works.
That's the one we used, though, isn't there the second one?
We spent that down and then the town authorized a $1.6 million borrowing, which is what we're spending down now.
So this Mass Works that you're talking about is how much?
The $2 million is expended.
Right. I understand that. What's this next one that you guys mentioned for next year?
We don't know yet.
Oh, well, how much have you asked for then?
We are sort of negotiating a figure with, with the state. We haven't arrived at, at a figure yet.
What's the range?
I would say close to a million.
And this is for the added water?
Correct. For the, the cost that has been incurred.
There's no confirmation.
Yeah. There is nothing, nothing solid in place yet.
Was there another question? I know Craig, you had something and then...
No, I think I'm all set.
You're all set now. Come on up. Mr. Ruthier.
Dennis Ruthier, 32 West Street. Michael came to our property and he marked out the property. And what's that all about? 32 West Street.
When was that?
Oh, maybe about a month ago. Because originally, we were supposed to just have a pipe across our driveway. Do you know what's going there?
Oh, well, the pump station's going on that, on that side.
How big is this pump station? And he had mentioned 20 by eight-feet tank.
The wet well is just over eight feet by eight feet. And it's deep, about 20 feet deep.
Yeah.
And then there's a, it's piped to a valve pit, which is 10 by seven wide.
Because he's only got an eight-foot by eight-foot square marked.
That's, that's the wet well footprint of the actual structure.
Isn't there a valve, a tanker valves? There's a wet tank and then there's one for valves.
One over at the old mill and one down on Bridge Street, that's what we're talking about, right, Phil? That's what you could actually take a look at.
The wet well is gonna be the concrete pad.
I thought this was, he said it was 20 by eight feet.
Yeah, it's eight by eight by 20 feet deep.
20 feet deep.
Yeah.
Bird's eye view, it's eight by eight on the ground footprint.
The 20 is depth.
And there's gonna be balusters in the driveway.
Correct.
And we had made comment to Diana, she was at our place, and these are gonna be obstructions in our driveway. We got a 25-foot wide driveway. It's the narrowest, it's the worst spot to put this pump station.
I thought there was, they were gonna be, they're not gonna be in the middle of the driveway.
In fact, you even made comments about turning around in our yard. And we have tractor-trailers coming in the yard. And we wanted to be recognized at the May 10th meeting, but it's because Sue Berry said we need to hear from 32 West Street. And nobody recognized us.
Yeah, that's the moderator's...
Yeah, you could have said something too.
So, but the balusters are not in the middle of your driveway?
No, they, they won't.
I don't know. I haven't seen a print. Mike Orr was there and he left.
Can this be looked into again and communicated with him? Could Mike please go and do this and put this to bed once and for all, please?
Yeah, yep.
And at the May 10th meeting, it was stated that these properties that were taken by eminent domain were all paid for. Well, I own 32 West Street. I never received any money.
Haven't sent back the form. There was a form...
Because this changed, this pump station changed several...
We're not gonna change these plans. This is not, this is like outside the scope of this meeting and it's...
This pump station has changed several times. It was never intended on 32 West Street. Now it's a 32 West Street. I asked Sue Berry, "Did you get paid?" She said, "No." I, I don't know. So the voters were misled.
So those abutters were notified and the only resident that responded and signed off was 12 Church Street. The other abutters have not, and was paid.
You can't...
Other abutters have not responded.
You can't respond if, if you're unsure of where all this is going.
To the best of my knowledge, the easement has not changed.
It was never intended on 32 West Street.
The easement has not changed at your address.
The easement has not changed, but the pump station did change. It was only supposed to be a pipe.
Can we get Michael out there to deal with this and explain where everything's gonna be? These aren't gonna be changed, is the plan.
Was he sent in the valet? What did you call it? Did you get sent to the...
So the abutters, where the town is requiring a permanent or temporary easement, they were notified in writing.
And they're gonna be digging within eight feet of a gas line, a 12-inch, 200 PSI gas line. And we still don't know the gas leak from last year. Who's at fault? This is crazy.
Marlene.
The town paid to have those properties, the, the dimensions of the easement appraised. And the appraiser came up with the value of those easements. And in the letter that the abutters received was the amount that they would be compensated. As they said, the only abutter that, or only resident that we're, you know, going to be looking at an easement that responded was 12 Church.
Yeah.
The other abutters have not responded.
That's because this...
So that's, so they haven't been paid.
So can they still be paying, can they still be, can they request that letter again?
Well, they should have received it, but I can send it again. That's certainly not a problem.
At least have it to Sue and to you, right?
Yeah.
At the very least, is what I'm saying. I'm not saying it's the right, this is, it's gonna end this problem, but just at least to do...
I believe, I believe the figure was $1,200.
I don't have that information with me right now.
And now we're having obstruction in our driveway.
Well, to the best of my knowledge, the plans I've seen does not show an obstruction.
There's been some, the ballards have changed lately because we've recognized that it was an obstruction around that utility pole. I remember meeting with you, I think, a couple of months ago. All the, all the meetings are kind of getting confusing. But I know that the ballards seem like they could be in obstructions with the, with the truck backing up right next to that utility pole.
For owners, yeah. There were, ballards were removed on one of the prints and now they're getting restored?
No, they're not.
In our driveway?
No, just, just around the control panel.
But it's in our driveway. You were the one that marked it, right? You were there with Gilaheer and dug up our electric line? And then you marked our electric line? And then you put paint marks where this lid...
With the contractor.
Yeah.
With Gilaheer.
And you're in the asphalt, aren't you?
With the...
The driveway couldn't be paved fully all the way because we have a leach field there. We have a 25-foot opening. You're going into the opening by five feet. There is a zone of influence that you're supposed to maintain, the gas lines of 21.5 feet. Are you in that range? Because up the street, you have more latitude to do that. Here, in our driveway, you have two major gas lines, plus a utility pole with heavy transformers. And they're an ignition source preventing lift stations. And you're gonna put it there?
I don't know if you want to get to...
Yeah, so we're, we're not gonna redesign the project.
The whole neighborhood will suffer. But it wasn't in our yard when you sent the easement to us. It was a pipe only.
Can we please have a discussion out there with Mike, with Bill, with whoever needs to be there from Gilaheer and get, let, so that they understand exactly where everything is and because...
I know where it is. We just measured it.
I'm asking for them to come and clarify and have this discussion with you.
You've been there. You've also been there. And you had trouble backing up, leaving our shop.
Well, I'm not agreeing, but...
You're not an engineer, but you can see how narrow it is. Trailers have to come in.
Right. And there's a lot of...
By the way, these new trucks...
There's a lot of things in that driveway.
And you can drive over, you can drive over the structures.
What, now with balusters there?
The balusters won't be there.
We just said they were gonna be in...
The balusters will be around the control panel.
Around the control panel.
We don't know where that's gonna be.
We don't know any of this.
That's why we're gonna have them meet you out there.
I need to get into our business.
We, we understand that. We will have...
Please.
And we are...
This is a severe problem.
We, he's telling you they're not gonna block the driveway.
Yeah, we changed that.
Can we please have absolutely clear plans with people there who can show them exactly where everything's going to be?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll do that.
This week, please.
We had somebody named Scott. He was supposed to come back. We called him. He never come back. Is he still with you?
No. He's not with our company, no.
Well, I understand why now. Because I think he was the lead on this. It, it's just a... No, I wouldn't comment.
You have his contact, you have Mr. Ruthier's contact?
I have his phone number. Yeah.
Okay. They will be in touch with you.
Can I just say one more?
Thank you.
And you're going to pound sheeting in next to the pole and next to these gas lines to put this tank in? They put marks, and they're going to put sheeting down, and they're going to have to pound it into the ground.
I think these, these are the details and questions, Mr. Ruthier. Mr. Ruthier, these are the questions for Mike and Phil and Gilaher.
No, he already marked it, and he already told me they're putting sheeting in. He's not answering.
You'll get your answer.
Pound sheeting in right next to the broker, right next to two major gas lines. Up the street is only one. And we had a problem already. Can you imagine working next to two lines? No. And utility pole. That's an ignition source.
I agree, I agree.
This is the most hazardous, perfect storm formulae, and if you proceed and put this that close, and I'm asking for support here, especially from the selectmen, that support business, these are major businesses.
We first have to get everybody together out there to find out both sides of the story, both sides of the story. I'm not an engineer. These are the engineers. Please let me speak. We've let you speak, and I understand your frustration, and I can't visualize this until everybody checks everything out.
Open invitation. Take a ride and drive in. There's sticks and there's marks right there. Even cars have trouble going in there. Imagine a truck. These new trucks now have what they call a regeneration cycle, and sometimes you can't stop it. And when they stop on the side of the road, they go up to 1,200 degrees and they race to clean up. That's my entrance right there. We have heavy trucks coming in. You really want to put a vented, flammable situation there next to transformers? We had a leak blow when we first moved here. It showers sparks. They catch fire, and you've got gases venting 6 to 8-feet away? What is the zone of influence for gas lines? You know it, because I know it. It's 21 and 1/2-feet. You're 6-feet from the major gas lines, and there's two of them. This is dangerous.
It depends on the depth of...
And who's responsible when this lets go? Who's going to put their name on this?
Mr. Ruthier, we're going to have the engineers come out immediately.
He already came out once.
I just wanted to say...
And he never put a specific on it, and he keeps sending different people. This is the fifth person from CEI that we've dealt with. Please help us. This is a business that's been there for 30-something years, and we want to continue. You can't destroy our only entrance. It's only 25-feet wide. Of that, five of it is encroached by their lift station. You figured it out. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say...
We'll be looking for more support.
I just wanted to say that a lot of us are talking all the time, because we all have our issues.
You saw it, Greg. You were there.
Yeah, I did, and I'm not, you know, I'm not on lose property, but we just want you to know that we all support his issue, too. We, you know, there's just one thing after another that we all have some really serious questions on. So, we're all on, we want all of us to be heard, not just my issue or...
We pay taxes also.
Yeah, we need everybody's, everybody's situation has got to be dealt with, because we're doing, it's just really, it's really difficult to live there and feel like you're just not heard. You know what I mean? So, I just wanted to say that on behalf of a lot of us here that I've talked to.
Well, we're all nervous about after that last gas leak. I'm afraid that the next time it's going to be worse, and my, I had to stay out of my house. I had to leave my house unlocked, so the gas company could walk in all night and take me to readings. I'm afraid that something's going to explode there.
Well, then, the gas company have to approve the prints?
We sent them, we sent them prints.
The gas company have to approve all this stuff?
Yeah, they said it was okay.
Well, maybe it would be great to have the gas company out there, too, when you meet with Mr. Ruthier.
I thought they told us last year they were going to have someone on-site all the time, supervising, and a week or so, and then they weren't there again.
That's true.
They did say that, yeah. They did say that.
That's an excellent point.
You've let this stuff slip by way too long.
I know some people have requested to get money back for like, my tenants had to stay in a motel. Has anyone here gotten any money back from the gas company? Because we've written two letters, and we've not got any response back.
Yeah, I haven't either.
Right, because we provided the...
And that would be, we wouldn't have any knowledge of that, so I'm glad you said something. I'm sorry that you pleaded like that.
His name, he gave us his name.
We will do what we can to expedite whatever those payments are.
Right, even though, you know, I have known that feelings about the chief of belief, but that's what he told me. He said, absolutely, you know, like, they will be paid for, and I just want you to know, I'm not, it's not the end of the world. I just, it just adds up, you know, all of them.
I understand. This has been a marathon for all of you, and I'm, you know...
For sure.
We're sorry about that, but we will look into, we'll reach out to our companies about that. So, let's get Michael out to meet with Mr. Ruthier. I would like the gas company there, because, you know, I'm not an expert on the things he's bringing up, but I want to know, and I want him to know, that all of that is all approved through the, whatever. I mean, if there's transformers there, maybe we need to have Eversource there, whatever. Whoever needs to be there to make them feel comfortable with this, we need to do it. One more quick thing, Mr. Ruthier, what?
Eversource has a no-go zone for their bolts and their wires. The gas company has a zone of influence. All of these utilities are converged right in the entrance to our yard. It's impossible to put a lift station there that vents. You're looking for the perfect storm. When this goes bad, everybody here suffers, not just us. I don't live there. That's our business. These four residents have put up with plenty.
Lou, that's exactly, Lou, that's exactly why I'm asking that those companies be present as well.
I have no faith, to be honest with you, Diana. I've already talked to Michael. What they did, they started with bad engineering, and they're trying to justify bad engineering.
Utility companies there, so that you have everybody there at one time. That needs to happen. Okay? We'll make that happen. Okay, anybody else? Sure, would you like to come up to the microphone?
Alan Betzel, 47 West Street. When they start that new process next year in the sewer line, is it going to take longer in people's front of the houses if they're going to get blocked out a lot, this and that? If they can't get into driveway out all day, it's going to be blocked like that or something?
You shouldn't be blocked. Well, that's a coordination thing between the contractor and us, and our on-site field rep, Gary Gerard, so we'll make sure that's, he's always watching, because you're not always around, that you won't get blocked.
Just to support him, because I have to be directed in and out of my driveway, because traffic won't stop to let me in when they're working out there. It's terrible. And sometimes they're going to lunch tonight. I've had to grab them and say, hey, I can't get out of my driveway, so you got to move your trucks, you know, so please, yes.
I have two driveways, and they block both of them at the same time. Crazy.
And another thing, they have to put something on that road that's going back to the construction lot there. That dust is unbelievable. Put something on the road to keep the dust down. Put something on the water or that other stuff, some kind of chemical they put on to keep the dust down.
Is that, go after the well?
Yeah. Try to paint the house. I can't do it for a couple of years or so, delayed and delayed and delayed.
Okay, I'll ask them to water that.
They've been told about two or three times. The woman, Paulie, next to me, her cousin, something told about that, too, but nothing was ever done with that road.
I would think that's something that they need to stay on top of, because it was such a dry summer, that, you know, Mother Nature didn't take care of patting down the dust, so, you know, for spring and getting into the summer, we're going to, I don't know how that works, if it's a weekly thing or, you know, but some sort of schedule, so that, you know, folks can enjoy the outside of their home without dust bowls being in there, coming through their windows and covering their houses.
Right, it's required by the contractor, the contractor to make sure there's no dust or they're using water.
One of us, there's a manhole where I live there. I don't know, I think it's a state problem, something, it's starting to wash away there, too, and everything. I think that's the state that has got to do something about that.
What's your number, 47?
47.
So, you'll look into that? Thank you.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you, Mr. Betzel.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, when you look at a, when the town looks at a bid to see who's the lower bid, do they also look at, like, references or ratings for the company? And Gilaher came through all that?
I'm not going to comment.
They worked on Hatfield before.
Yes, they did, and I, you know, I, I'm sorry, yeah, but...
There wasn't enough to disqualify.
There was not enough to disqualify.
There's procurement laws we have to follow.
And there are, there are procurement laws and...
Help us. Well, you guys got your hands full keeping these guys to the fire. That's all I can say. So, thanks for your help.
Well, we appreciate you guys hanging in there, and it will be over someday, and you will have sewer lines, and that'll be great. Okay, thank you all for coming. I trust that you, too, will follow up as, as is warranted. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Did I ask that you would inform us? Send us a letter, just updating us on what is going on and who you've talked to or something? Because we wait eight months at a time and nothing, and it's just, you know, we need to get back here again, so.
Did you mean about something in particular, or...
Well, I mean, all the meetings that you're having and all the, and all the things that are planned to be done, and put it in writing, what some of the things are and when we can expect. Excuse me? Yeah, you did tell us, you keep us informed, you did tell us to keep us updated, but nobody did until it was time for a meeting.
But a lot of that, and I'm not deflecting, by the way, but a lot of that was supposed to be by the, the, the engineers, onsite person. And again, I'm not deflecting, and we can do a better job of us communicating with you, but, but we can communicate what we're, well, but they're onsite, you're living it, and they're out there, and they should be communicating better with the residents as to what's happening, so.
Phil, I think you should be the, you're the communication link between the contractor, the engineer, what's happening out there, and the residents. So, like, for instance, when they're, when they have a projected date, they're going to start in April. They should know that.
Right, the paving for sure should, right.
You know, like, this is, this is, this is, I think, you know, at this point, very basic communication with them. It need, that does need to happen.
Right, and I think that, I think the residents should be notified of anything that affects everybody, which is a road closure, it's the paving, it's the, you know...
When the April stuff is going to start, all of that, like, that's...
I often wonder about that, that phone thing that was taken, we have in Hatfield. They used to call us every time, like, the dump was closed, and I would think they would say, you know, maybe take a different alternate route or do something to the people in town, you know, so that they would know, hey, there's, our street's blocked at both ends, and you have to sit in traffic and get guided through. It would be just nice to get the phone call that, instead of like Cronin Hill Road, maybe Room 5 is going to be a cluster today, so maybe you want to take a roundabout and go around the center of town, you know?
Yeah.
We were also told at the last meeting...
A lot of the traffic on that road, to be perfectly honest, is probably not Hatfield residents, but, but it's not a bad idea to do.
One of the two main routes to get in and out of town.
Yeah, it is, so there's both things, you know, because we, I know. We were also told at the last meeting that when things started up again in the spring, there would be another meeting to let us know that things were starting up. Will that still be happening? Okay.
And could you make it, like, not just a week before it happens, but like a couple of weeks, or give us a little more lead time?
Well, yes, but to be honest, sometime, you know, it's planned, it's correct, but yes, we would certainly try to give as much notice as possible.
We're going to have a beautiful road in three weeks.
Except for 1,500 feet.
Thank you, everybody.
Hang in there, please. Thank you.
With that said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just adjourned. Yeah, just so John knows.